Their meeting of the planning commission of the city of Chattahoochee Hills for March fourteenth. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve it and we can discuss it?
I'll make a motion right first.
Is there a second? Any discussion agenda stands okay? No discussion, all in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda stands approved. Next order of business, the approval of the minutes of the February fifteenth regular meeting of the city of Chattahoochee Hills Planning Commission. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? What did I say? Did I not say February? Okay, good. Is there a second?
I will second them.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries, the minutes are approved. Tonight is a continuation of the public hearing from our last meeting. We are going to call the public hearing to order at this time. The continuation of the hearing, it was for a recommendation on an ordinance to approve a special use permit for a country inn in the RL rural district and for all other purposes related there too. This property is located at eighty-seven thirty-five Wilkerson Mill Road. I'm going to call for public comment at this time, but first I need to read the revised procedures for for public hearings. They were adopted by the city council, the last city council meeting on the fifth, I believe it was, as well as a resolution that was adopted covering public comment in the various types of hearings. So for this special use permit, I'm going to read the revised public comment rules. The chairs to allow each side equal opportunity to the floor and establish time limits for this public hearing. If you desire to speak in support of or in opposition to the item, you must fill out a public comment card, the yellow cards, and turn it into Ms. Witcher, the city clerk. All speakers, when they come up to the podium, should identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable before beginning their presentation. In this case tonight, given the number of, how many speak? Okay, so in this case, each side will have ten minutes to present their case, and that's per side. The applicant may take as much of the allotted time for those supporting the issue as he or she may want. All others speaking in support or in opposition shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. That is a new part of the practice that was just adopted by the city council. The chair may extend the allotted time for an equal amount to both sides as appropriate. All of those speaking in support of the item will speak first. The applicant again may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Those opposing the issue will speak next. If any time remains, the opposition will be allowed to rebut the final remarks made by the applicant. Written comments and supportive of the issue will be read out loud if time remains after all others present at the hearing supporting the issue have spoken and after the applicant has had an opportunity to rebut the statements made by those in opposition to the issue. Written comments in opposition to the issue will be read out loud if time remains after all others present at the hearing opposing the issue have spoken. Following the presentations by the applicant, those in seeking in support of the application and those opposing the application, the city staff shall present its position. City clerk, Ms. Witcher, will keep time and will inform you when your allotted time has expired. During the public hearing, members of the planning commission shall listen to the presentation made by all those who speak. No action on their part is in order until the chair declares the public hearing complete. Following public comment, the planning commission chair shall close the public comment portion of the hearing with respect to the proposal under consideration and seek discussion and or a motion to act on the proposal as provided in section three dash nine. So at this point, the public comment period is open and the applicant may speak if the applicant chooses.
Well, I'll defer to everyone and I'll save my time.
Okay. Will, no one else in, signed up for supporting? So we'll move to those in opposition and we'll call them in the order that the cards were received by Ms. Witcher.
First is Mary Ellen Goode.
Hello. My name is Mary Ellen Goode. I live at eighty-seven oh one Wilkerson Mill Road. My property borders on the left side in the back of the petition's property. I am opposed to petition for the event center and country inn. Adding at least a hundred cars a day to our neighborhood roads would certainly increase traffic congestion, noise, wear and tear on our roads, endanger anyone wanting to walk their dog or ride a bike. I believe some of the details that were, that the applicant is asking for have become blurred. At the February fifteenth planning meeting, the applicant's representative, Chandra, asked for a hundred and fifty for event and fifty dining guest at the event center. Then at the March fifth council meeting, the applicant changed it to two hundred and fifty for event and fifty for dining guest. Which is it? This is a huge difference. Also, it has been stressed that only weddings and related celebrations such as rehearsal dinner would be allowed. And at the March fifth council meeting, the applicant told of plans to host classes of charter school kids to teach cooking classes. I ask that you please consider what kind of gatherings will be permitted in your written requirements for this proposed permit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Gloria Edwards.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Gloria Edwards and I am speaking on behalf of my neighbors who has given me their prophecy.
Ma'am, could you identify where you live and if you're?
Okay, my name is Gloria Edwards, seven, four, one, five Cascade Palmetto Highway. My property butts, it's a two acre lot and the end of my property is Petersburg Road. I send before you an objections to the opposed special use applied by Justin Robinson at eighty-seven thirty-five Wilkerson Mill Road. In the application, I have heard over and over that it is similar to Serenby. In fact, it is no way in comparison to Serenby or any other existing country inn in the city. Serenby Country Inn, which serves at the Hamlet or the Rash Country Inn, is on approximately one hundred acres as opposed to this particular island of twenty-eight acres. The subjected property is proposed to include over twenty-two eight thousand square feet of commercial building in comparison to surrounding properties that consist of single families, homes, senior citizens, and those homes are from eighteen hundred to twenty-five hundred square feet of residential space. This would be not appropriate for the existing circumstances. It does not fit. You all are holding the citizens that come through the city, one set of roofs, meaning when we want to buy acres, we would have to go at twenty acres per house. And this is being considered for a business right in the middle of our homes, a RL district. It is not compatible. The proposed use of land used for surrounding properties and other properties within the same district, including the compatibility of size, scale, and mass of proposed buildings in relationship to the size, scale, and mass of adjacent and nearby buildings. It does not fit the existing communities. Also, to topple off the traffic, I will leave this to Ms. Ford, who I got my open records request from Georgia DOT as it relates to the intersection specifically of Palmetto Cascade Highway and Wilkerson Mill Road. And I gave that to her so she could merge Chat Hills and nine-one-one calls and I'll leave that for her to elaborate on it. But this compiled, I'll say, leaving Ms. Mary and all this is coming into, no, no turning lane or anything is leaving this for any buildup of traffic to be sitting right in the front of Ms. Mary's home or in her right away and the driveway. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is Lenora Johnson.
Good afternoon, everyone. Lenora Johnson, eight, seven, two, five, Wilkerson Mill Road. The impact that myself and neighbors in our community will be experienced and enduring with the harms of people and cause that will be traveling on two Wilkerson Mill Road to get to eight, seven, three, five. The traffic alone is a big impact by itself. Adding all the guests, employees, the owner, and commercial vehicles is even more of an impact. There are accidents all the time at the crossing where Highway one fifty-four, Cascade Palmetto intercept crossing with Wilkerson Mill Road. Added to it is even more of a hazard to put sixteen rooms, which I heard they are double, commercial kitchen slash private dining, a large building for events and dining in the center of a small, loving, quiet, caring community, the neighbors backyards and a shared, a shared lake where the other people want to build a home. It just don't fit in that little small area. It's just too much of an impact of all the ideals that eight, seven, thirty-five is changing to. He changed the plan again. It's no longer called the country inn. The amount of people he said stated at the last meeting went up. He, according to the reader, he's asking for two hundred and fifty people now. According to his plan, it's called the experience estate. That's just a lot of changing that he's doing to impact on all of us that live off of Wilkerson Mill Road and Petersburg Road. The neighbors backyard in a shared lake, it just don't fit. It's a good idea, but it's for a more open, large area so he can put all the things that he need. All the schools he want to do and all the partying with the bands he want and all the homes that he's building. I don't know, are those tiny homes? What kind of homes are those? It's double room. That's more guests. That's more bathroom. I don't understand none of this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
There's like two minutes and forty seconds left in one part.
Well, let's expand it to three minutes if that's all right with everybody. We'll expand it to three minutes, so that'll make it a total of thirteen minutes. Not quite. Let's expand it to thirteen minutes, okay?
Good evening, City Staff. My name is Katrina Ford, seventy-four, twenty-five Petersburg Road. I am one of the fifteen adjacent parcels to Justin Robinson's land. I want to talk about traffic. So per an open records request from the Chat Hills Police, Fulton County nine-one-one dispatch and the Georgia DOT, there are six, there were sixteen accidents in twenty-twenty-three at the intersection of Cascade Palmetto Highway and Wilkerson Mill. The traffic that will be coming to Justin Robinson's property will more than likely be coming off of Cascade Palmetto Highway onto Wilkerson Mill. That's one accident. That's an average of one accident a month. And that doesn't include the unrecorded or the unreported close calls. And so my question for the planning commission is how do you guys determine a proposal's adverse impact on traffic? If we already have an average of one accident per month, per month where Justin Robinson's property is? Also, too, I'd like to see a tree plan. So right now, again, Justin's property will, well, his proposed estate will be in my backyard. We do not have the tree density to stop noise. We currently hear his outdoor birthday dinners and I understand the fifty-five decibels. That's, that's how I'm talking now, fifty-five decibels. If we're going to have three hundred people in an outdoor dining area, that's going to be more than fifty-five decibels. I'll end with this. Last year, Justin Robinson and his wife stood before the planning commission, the city council, and the citizens of Chat Hills to say that he wanted to build, build his home also on the property among his proposal last year. Today, his house is not on the plan. And so if the, his proposal does not fit for himself and his family, why is it good enough for the rest of us who are adjacent to his property? If he doesn't want to live amongst, among sixteen eight hundred square feet cabins, if he doesn't want to live among an outdoor dining area and a seven thousand square foot event venue, then why should he subject us to live adjacent to that? And actually, this is the last thing. A special use permit is not a right. That is why we have the planning commission here to make a decision to see if it fits. And the fifteen parcels that are adjacent to Justin Robinson's property feel that it does not fit.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have no other, what's on my cards?
In opposition. How much time remains? Okay, so practically no time remains. Do we have cards for those speaking in favor of the? Thirteen minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name again is Justin for those who have not met me yet. I'm a private chef and caterer and I do a lot of culinary activations and activity. And the purpose of this project is to expand those experiences. Few notes that I want to touch on that my neighbors and close community have a voice here today, mainly with the traffic. After these few points, I would like to reserve some time to pass off to my architect, who's going to be kind of speaking a little bit more in depth to everything else. When it comes to the traffic, my exact impact on a max scenario with there being a max of two hundred and fifty people for the, as well as the country inn, would be three hundred people that come in and out on a max day. Per G dot, that's a three percent impact to the current rate that's going on right now to make enough of a negative impact where there would be further city action. Three percent is so low to the point where that's not going to be the case. Currently, right now, on Cascade Palmetto, turning on to Wilkerson, we have a traffic study that shows there's on average twelve hundred cars on a daily. That's not going to be the case from our property. The events that would be held on the property would be on a weekend base. On the daily, we have the country inn that does have sixteen rooms and people are able to dine on a private booking basis. So we're looking on average, on a daily, consistent basis, I would say twenty-five to fifty cars because the max capacity for the recommendations that was set by the planning committee is fifty people per event. So I just want to bring that to you all's attention when it comes to the facts of the actual traffic. I'd like to speak to the density of my project. So I have twenty-eight point seven acres of land and the actual square footage of all buildings would be, we'll round it to twenty-three thousand. Twenty-three thousand square foot on a twenty-eight point seven acre property is actually less of a density impact than a twenty-five hundred square foot house on a two to three acre lot. So when we think of the actual study of the lay of land, and there's a similar video that was sent out to kind of probably explain that, that I sent to all you guys. The actual build of the property of the experience estate is less dense than a single family house for those neighboring fifteen lots. There are people that have sign in favor of the neighboring parcel, so it isn't all fifteen neighboring people that are opposed to this project. And I've turned that into the city as well. I'd like to touch also on the slight confusion of the exact capacity. So for the, the look and feel of the country inn, there will be sixteen rooms, all at eight hundred square foot. When we originally turned in this project, we did have sixteen room, but the square footage was a little bit larger. We proposed to have twelve hundred square foot. We also had a dining hall that was going to be twelve thousand square feet. But due to the concerns of the neighbors, us trying to find a middle ground that was both beneficial for myself as well as the neighbors and listening to the concerns so that they can still have the quality of life that they deserve of the property that they own and live on, we have tremendously cut almost in half the size of what we're proposing. The square footage of the venue is now seven thousand, not twelve thousand. The country ends are at eight hundred square foot per room, not twelve hundred per room. And even to the shared lake point, originally, we had the country ends as close to the water because it's a beautiful lake. It's a beautiful feature. But there were concerns that noise would carry so forth and so on. So we have actually pushed that back closer up on the property so that there is plenty buffer on all surrounding sides of where we're proposing to build everything. So with that being said, even from the driveway standpoint, you know, it's unfortunate that the new proposed driveway is also between Ms. Mary and Ms. Lenora. Originally, it was just by Ms. Lenora and another neighboring neighbor who is in favor of this project. But due to the concerns of Ms. Lenora, we suggested that we move the actual entryway to have as least as an impact on her, her grandchildren, her dogs, and any time she would like to be outside so that so there's enough natural buffer where people turn in or not be any headlights visible. And I explained that in the video that I sent to you all. And I would like to defer the remaining time to my architect and project manager, Chandra. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for allowing us to continue on this endeavor and making this a place of great intention here in Chattahoochee Hills. What you guys, yes?
Please identify yourself and your address.
So I am Chandra Moore. I am project manager for Justin. I've been working with him probably since January of this year and it's been, it's been a fun experience for sure to understand what's happening and what you guys are doing in Chattahoochee Hills. So as far as we're talking about the intention, Chattahoochee Hills, you guys have created this motto where you guys are creating this idea of a place of intention. And so if we think about the place of intention and really what that means, especially to the community, that is something that the experience estate is doing. It's creating a place of intention for wellness, a place of intention to, for health, far as health goes, for his food. Because we all know that obesity and way the food is in the industry currently, it's not, we're not in favor of what we're doing here in America. So what he is proposing is definitely something that is needed within the city. I am going to talk about eight points of intention that we plan on doing. The first one is the experience estate. It's a quiet luxury retreat. So there will be no ideas of noise and extra noise because this is a place where we intend to have the silence of the zen and the oasis where people will come to relax and retreat. There will, the idea of having twenty-four hour parties, that is not the place of where this will reside. As we're talking about, and not only that, if you notice on the plan, what we've done is we've created buffers, very similar to what a hamlet is doing. So the hamlet buffers are roughly around a hundred, a hundred and twenty. We're at a hundred and twenty-four feet for buffer all the way around. So we're meeting the code regarding the buffers. So once we go back to the quiet oasis, we're meeting the code for quiet oasis, a hundred and twenty feet from there. I would also like to talk about the community's concerns, some of the concerns regarding the lake views. Once again, the buffers are there. And we've also, as Justin has tapped earlier, we've changed square footage and noise control and location. We've pushed everything back to the back per the neighbors' request. That is something that Justin has gone to the neighbors to ask about if they could push it all the way to the back, which he has done. So therefore, everything has been pushed back to the back and we're still holding the buffers. When it comes to, and we've been also offering this open communication this entire time. So it's not nothing like he's been in hiding and doing this and changing ideas. Everything has definitely been in open since the beginning of time since I've been here and I've met with everyone before that. When we're talking about the special use permit, as stated in the Code of Ordinances of Appendix A Unified Development Code, Article seven, the uses, on page two of twenty-six, it talks about a country inn is there and you can have up to six to fifty rooms. And we meet that in the code. And not only do we meet the, the room that is allowed, we've also shrank it and so that it's eight hundred square feet. So we're in the use of the special permit. On page three of the special permit, it talks about an event center, large means of, large means of commercial facility or assembly hall available, released by private parties or special events such as weddings and holding more than fourteen days of events within a calendar year or any event with it with a capacity of more than fifty attendees. That's in this article. So we're meeting the special use requirements that is stated in the article given by Chattahoochee Hills. On page six, it talks about outdoor dining means and in it accessory area for seating on a portion of the sidewalk or lot outside of a business establishment. So when we're talking about the dining that he has in the corner, if there is idea of he does want to be able to show a couple of seats outside, we are following in those guidelines of special use permit. We're not saying there's going to be a lot of people out there, but we are following in the guidelines. When it comes to noise, as stated before, when I was here last time, we did the decibels. And if we were looking at decibels, I understand the community is talking about fifty-five. I understand that. We talked about a concert of a hundred and twenty. And even if you look at a subway train, it's a hundred. And if we're looking at a loud radio, it's eighty. So just to give everybody a ballpark. So if we take something as hard as a subway train, which is a hundred decibels, you will see that that is at eighteen meters. So with the eighteen meters, that calculates fifty-nine feet. So fifty-nine feet is a subway train from where the river is, from where our neighbor is over to the buffer. So with that fifty-nine feet, they should be able to hear a subway train. We're not going to be as loud as a subway train. Everyone knows that. So with that said, we're at a hundred and twenty feet from the buffer and we're still, where we can double it and still have enough noise control. So I get everyone saying, well, I heard the party and things of that nature. I'm just stating architectural facts. And the facts are a subway train is a hundred decibels. And if with that, that's eighteen meters. That's sixty feet. And we're a hundred and twenty-four feet, which means we can double that. When it comes down to the property value, when we're doing research now and I'm in the middle of doing performas for Justin. And after an extensive analysis, the current market value of properties on Wilkerson is between two hundred and two-hundred and thirty-five thousand. That is thirty-six percent lower compared to the homes within ten to fifteen mile radius. And that is due because everyone knows that Serenby is closer. So when we're talking about including additional community amenities or a country in. Currently, the average household income of Chattahoochee Hills is roughly around one thirty-seven plus or minus. With the experience estate, the Wilkerson Avenue, that doubles the property value. And it also doubles the um within seven percent in the first year. So within the first year of after construction, we're at seven percent doubled.
Excuse me a second. Did the time expire? No, excuse me. Pardon me, go ahead.
So I want to make sure that everyone understands that the property value. I understand everyone saying, well, we're talking about the noise. No, this is an increase and this is an, this is a. This is a advantage and this is an asset for Chattahoochee Hills to go have a seven percent increase with on this street. And we're, when we're following all the guidelines, there, I don't understand why there is a concern and an issue. And there's concerns that we have addressed that the community has come up to a voice regarding gun use and all of these other things. We've addressed those in our stipulations where it's clearly states that we won't ha- have gun use on this property. So not only have we've been a project with great intention to be a community asset, to be a, to be a good neighbor. That's been our intention the entire time. I can't speak for yesteryear. I can only speak for today. And I know that today, what Justin has created and what the team and I have created all falls in the guidelines of special use permit. It falls in the guidelines of honoring the the neighbor and that's what we're doing currently. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there uh any time left opposition? Um, thank you. I, at this point, since we've had the um. Comments and public comment and opposition, public comments and support, it's time for the city to uh make its uh express its position on the matter.
This is working? Okay, good. Um, so staff recommends approvals, especially use permit for the country. And with the attached recommended conditions, so you want me to read the condition?
Well, I think we should because they've changed.
Yes, they have. Do you want me to do the red line versions, but just the regular versions?
Well, no, the, yeah.
The ones that were handed out today? Okay. So the first condition is the site plan submitted with the application will serve as a site plan for the development. Any departure from this design will require council approval. Two, events are accessory to the country end. It shall be limited to private group dining events and wedding celebration events, including rehearsal dinners, wedding ceremonies. And wedding receptions. Venue will not serve as a restaurant for the general public, but only for overnight guests of the estate. Three, the permitted capacity of the dining venue will be limited to a maximum of two hundred and fifty guests for wedding celebrations and fifty guests for dining events. Any event to exceed this limit will require a special event permit from the city. There shall be no outside catering. The applicant shall directly supervise all weddings and dining events. Five, parking surfaces shall be made from previous materials, i.e. gravel, brick, papers. Uh, except for the areas dedicated to handicap parking. No parking shall be allowed on residential streets or entry drive. All parking shall be confined to designated parking areas. Six, wedding event shall not start before six P M. On weekdays and twelve o'clock noon on weekends. It shall not end after ten P M. No delivery shall be received on, uh, received before nine A M. Uh, or after ten P M. No event related activities such as breakdown or loadout of equipment. Or decorations will take place more than one hour after the end of the event. Wedding events shall be limited to Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. All vendors and any guests who are not registered guests of all of the onsite accommodations. And must complete the tear down and vacate the property within one hour after the end of the event. Seven, the hundred twenty foot buffer surrounding the property shall be undisturbed other than natural surface walking trails. No portion of the trail shall be closer than fifty feet of the property lines unless the owner of the adjoining property grants express written permission. Eight, all activity boundaries, including but not, but not limited to trail boundaries, shall be adequately marked by signage, horse fence. Or another method as approved by the director to prohibit guests from entering neighboring properties. Nine, only foot and bicycle use shall be allowed on trails, no motorized vehicles. Uh, the duration of the special use permit shall expire with the sale or transfer of the property of the country end. Eleven, there shall be no music or amplified sound to exceed fifty-five decibels beyond the interior side of the hundred twenty foot buffer. There shall be no recreational gunfire on the property, uh, no gas powered U T D slash A T D slash golf cart style vehicles. The site shall incorporate adequate designated delivery areas and solid waste service areas that designed to minimize truck reversing. Using pull through areas whenever possible. The design of the entrances and exits of the event center buildings. Shall include vestibules with two sets of doors and other features that's necessary to dampen any opportunities for sound transmission to the exterior of the structure. Event generator shall not be allowed except that enclosed or sound dampened emergency generators will be utilized in the event of loss of power. No fireworks or pyrotechnics shall be allowed. No music or amplified sound shall be allowed a- around cabins or pond. Uh, twelve, no vet activity shall be visible above the tree line. This includes a prohibition on fireworks, releasing paper lanterns and other activities that could be a nuisance or danger to neighbors. Thirteen, the driveway for the country end shall be relocated from the frontage that lies the east of eighty-seven twenty-five Wilkerson Mill Road. And located equidistant from the side property lines. Any tree removal from the driveway shall be kept to a minimum. The existing driveway to the west of eighty-seven twenty-five Wilkerson Mill Road shall be blocked by gate baller or vegetation. And may be accessible only to emergency vehicles. Fourteen, a visual buffer shall be installed along the property lines shared with the adjacent properties. That front Wilkerson Mill Road, the buffer shall be installed and maintained along the property lines shared within four hundred feet of Wilkerson Mill Road. Buffer shall be approved by the director and acceptable uh and acceptable to the effective property owner. And may include the following options. A, uh, which is a vegetative buffer. Of fifty feet at a density and height sufficient to provide an effective year-round visual vehicular buffer screen for the adjacent properties. Uh, or B, an opaque fence. Fifteen, solid waste storage containers receiving garbage shall be, shall be placed on solid or concrete platforms or pads. Located and constructed to minimize spillage and facilitate cleanup. Such containers shall be fully enclosed by a wall or an opaque fence and located ten feet on the uh, ten feet of the kitchen. Truck access to these containers will need to be considered when selecting a location for the containers. Said container shall be emptied at a minimum of once a week by contracted solid waste company between the hours of eight A M. To five P M. On weekdays. Uh, sixteen, the signage for the country and shall meet the requirements set forth in the city sign ordinance and shall not exceed thirty-two square feet in size or exceed six feet in height. Seventeen, the applicant shall provide one to two small private property or similar size to be used. At eighty-seven twenty-five Wilkerson Mill Road to discourage guests from entering the wrong property. Eighteen, residential quiet zone signs visible to traffic. Uh, entering and exiting the property shall be incorporated on all driveways. Quiet zone. Uh, please be considerate of all residents of um and our neighbors. Nineteen, inadequate grease trap shall be installed on the property to prevent discharges from the kitchen and dining area. Said grease trap must meet the requirements set forth by the Georgia Department of Health, Public Health. The applicant must regularly maintain the grease trap. Twenty, no concerts shall be allowed at this location even under separately issued special event permit. Twenty-one, the owners or their customers shall hire private security or off-duty police officers for all wedding events. Twenty-two, no use of the pond by guests shall be allowed except shoreline activities, fishing, sunbathing, et cetera. No music or amplified sound allowed. Around the pond. Twenty-three, lighting. Uh, limit light on the neighboring properties and light glare. Any light pole shall be limited to twenty feet in height. Shall utilize shielded downlights. No light pole or utility light shall be located within a hundred and twenty feet, a hundred and twenty feet of the pond or any property lawn. This is not to exclude the use of landscape lighting as described in letter D below. Parking areas, driveways, and roads shall be designated, or sorry, designed to prevent um headlights from directly. Or indirectly eliminating the pond or buffer areas towards neighboring properties. Many to build fencing in these areas. Lighting, um, the sixteen lodging unit shall not be illuminate the pond, neither interior nor exterior lodging unit. Shall reflect onto the shared pond. A senior, a single exterior five hundred, a four hundred and fifty lumen downlight shall be allowed per unit. Except as per buyer, as required by building code or fire and life safety code. Window coverings and or additional vegetative screening may be required to minimize light glare. D, any landscape lighting must be downlights and not shine outward. Downlighting from ballers is a gl- is allowed. Landscape lighting is limited to illumination required for pedestrian safety. And twenty-four. The owner must submit a tree management plan for approval to by the director. Tree removal is not allowed in any buffer. It is limited to the minimum requirements for construction according to the approved site plan. Additional tree clearing is not allowed unless the tree is diseased or a safety danger. Tree shall remain to constitute a visual and physical vegetative buffer. Okay.
Circle back. What is staff's recommendation?
Oh, uh, we recommend approval, but with the recommended conditions.
And we've now heard from those opposing, those in favor and staff's position. So at this point, we're going to close the public comment period of this hearing. Uh, a public comment period is closed. Um, and it is now time for the planning commission to discuss and to consider a motion. Uh, whether or not they want to make a motion on this proposal. So as far as discussion goes, um. Do either of you want to talk at this point or have questions, please?
I have another question. It's been expressed by um those opposed that.
Nope, it was on, they're just too far away.
Too far away. That better? Okay. The capacity has been changed from what we talked about at the last meeting. Um, I did some research and the average U S wedding is about a hundred and sixteen people. Um, so I'm curious as to why the change from the one fifty that we talked about last month. And the flexibility of the two hundred and fifty number because I, that's, that's a huge event when you factor in vendors. Deliveries, all those things.
So for for the record, the original application did come in saying two fifty and that's what it had said in the first read before city council. Um, it was uh the applicant's presentation um where the one fifty number came from. So just, just, just for clarity. I think the question that was addressed to the applicant is that.
Um, if you'd like to answer, you can.
Uh, thanks for that course, uh, question, Christine. So uh currently my business state, uh, my weddings that I cater. Uh, like one that was most recently booked is two hundred. Um, the max wedding that I've catered to date in my culinary career has been four hundred people played it. Um, so what I wanted to do is not have that big of a people come in for four hundred. I thought two fifty. Which is kind of standard of what I currently uh cater. So that was the reason why the two fifty was turned in. I understand that the one fifty came about from um, one of my members trying to um. Kind of conform back and forth to what made sense and that's what kind of stuck as we trickled down, but um. I would like to stay firm on the two fifty, but if there is a need to come down um from that one fifty to two fifty. Um, I have no issue with um a two hundred uh guest limit.
Mike.
Thank you.
On that point, that was actually going to be one of my points as well. Um. If he were to do anything above two fifty, he has to come back and ask for a special use permit, right?
It would be a, yeah, special event permit and only a, a limited number of those would be available on the property per year.
Okay. A limited number. What is that limited to?
It's a eight, like to double to eight, yeah, eight per year, yeah.
Okay, eight. So if we were to find a compromise on reducing the number. And if he had to have an event that that came up with a higher number, let's say we went to one fifty or two hundred.
That's correct. That's great. It could be done, right? It's a, right, right. It's, it's a bit of a process and 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 an expense to go through that. But yes, absolutely, it could be, could be.
I would like to make an attempt at reducing that number. That's what I can't get on board with was it was offered and that was retracted. That's, that's the impression that I have. I wasn't here, but I did watch it. Um, so i- if there is a compromise or reducing that. And then asking for a special event permit, if you see that, I think I could probably get on board with that. The other question that I have, um, because I do live in Serenby and there are parties from time to time and I live across from a lake. Um, it is addressed in here about stuff and noise levels at the lake and no activities at the lake. But lakes cause sound transference very differently than land does. So if you have outdoor dining or if you have outdoor things that happen at the lake. It reflects like you would not believe across the lake. And it amplifies it. It's not even as loud as you, it is where it's happening. So I would like to see something addressed that that's, does not become an issue. Uh, do we feel like we have adequately, adequately covered in what we said? Um, because that is a real thing.
Right. Mike, isn't there a condition about, about needing, possibly needing fencing or buffering up there around the pond?
At, at the lake, we didn't ask for anything additional um at the lake. There's a, but there's a, a reference to the possibility for, for something to shield light. Um, m- maybe something additional to shield light from those, those last couple cabins. Um, uh, we do have the limitation on the decibel level for um, uh, on the property interior to the buffer. Um, and that would certainly apply there. Um, most of the activity areas are farther from the lake in their site plan, right? It's the, it's the lodging that's closest to the lake. Um, so that, that should be um mostly interior activity, at least presumed, presumably. Um, uh, I don't know, there might be, there might be ways to um, uh, to better address that. But they, where they're showing the garden with some potential outdoor dining space is quite a little ways from the lake. It's uh probably. Estimating only two hundred and fifty, three hundred feet, something like that, two hundred and fifty.
What do you, the topography um of the site, how, what would you say the elevation changes? From where the dining hall and the commercial kitchen are to the lake. Are we? Twenty feet above it? Are we thirty feet above it? It's that flat? Okay.
So.
I- do we have the capacity to put the site plan on the screen?
I'm sorry, oh, okay. So the topo we have here isn't, isn't labeled. The site is fairly flat, but there is some topo.
There's a little.
I'm guessing, wish I knew what those lines were. I wish I printed this at a larger scale.
Flat the lake would be a lot bigger.
I'm going to guess those are two foot lines.
I'm sure the architect could tell us.
But we can look at it. We can look at it.
Right. So from, from the dining venue, it's going to be, it's going to be at least a twenty foot drop, probably more like twenty-five or maybe thirty. If those are two foot lines.
Okay. And we are approximately from, let's say, the corner of the commercial kitchen, outdoor garden to the corner of the lake. We're looking at what? Four hundred feet? Two hundred, may, maybe two hundred and fifty feet.
Hmm.
Yes. And it's a thin, it's too fine.
It will be enclosed as well.
Will be enclosed.
Yes, sir.
The outdoor component is enclosed.
The outdoor component that people are, are referring to, meaning the kitchen itself would be, I would say, four to five. Outdoor patio tables. So I guess that's the only thing I would do.
Okay. You're not, you're, you're not going to have a hundred and fifty people outside. Okay.
We can also put it on to the. You can create it so that it's on this side.
I would suggest wherever this is leading, if you're inclined to approve that we add a condition for these, the numbers we're talking, right? Number of outdoor tables, those sorts of.
Talk through it and then.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Well, the first condition would be to reduce it to.
One fifty.
The one fifty. And then anything beyond that, it's a special event permit request.
That's condition number three.
If I can interject something on that point, if, if it's reduced back to the one fifty that was discussed at the. Uh, at the last planning commission meeting, does that moot your comment about additional overflow parking maybe needed?
Uh, oh, um, uh, probably. Um, it's not a bad idea specifically, particularly if they think they might be getting special event permits for larger. To have, um, they would be limited in the number of um designed parking spaces they have. Um, they would be limited in the number of, um, designed parking spaces they have. And if there was something that's a, uh, uh. Gravel parking area, but they could have something that's maybe an open field that could be used for overflow parking. Um, still, still might not be a bad idea for them to have if they're going to be doing these other events. But for the hundred and fifty, they probably wouldn't need it, the number they've shown.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, I, I guess the next condition would be as relative to the number of people outdoors lake facing. If we could talk about that, um. Okay, yeah, obviously it won't be a hundred and fifty people. You said you had a small outdoor space. Um, where would you show, could someone point it out on the plan over there? I know we can't do it on the screen, but.
Oh, it is.
So where I'll actually be cooking is right here.
Yeah.
Um, the outdoor area would be kind of on this intersection between the dining hall itself and the kitchen itself.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So there is the natural wall of the kitchen. In between where people would potentially sit as well as, uh, the lake itself.
So the blacks rectangle between the two buildings is meant to be outdoor something?
Courtyard area and landscape.
Okay. And that's where people would be outside, not, not in front of your buildings facing the lake.
That's correct.
Okay.
Only thing structured as randomly close to the water itself.
And the cabins are going to be turned on their side so that they are not facing and reflecting light into the lake.
That's correct. That's the beauty of the structure. Uh, we have the front that running parallel. So there's no light that can reflect through a wall, which is why we positioned it in that niche. So, uh, with the proposed conditions that was set, um, I think everything is, um, in approval, everything is checked off.
I th- I think with the outdoor space that's between the dining hall and the commercial kitchen, if we could provide some sort of, um. I don't want to say visual buffer, but au- audio buffer. Maybe it's a vegetative screen or a low wall. It's, uh, you know, at, at least the height of a person, six feet. I, I'm, I, I think I'd like to add something like that to that zone if we could. Or maybe it's a continuous screen between the two buildings to provide, to diminish the audio transference.
So do you want to specify, uh? So, so you would be comfortable with language that specified either vegetative buffer or, or a wall?
Or a wall.
Okay.
Like a courtyard wall or a vegetated.
A dense, dense vegetated screen that would break that sound up. That could also be a feature that was good for you that had lighting on it or something. Doug, you have anything you want to discuss?
Yes, I do, um. I think you've answered my question about the overflow parking. That was in response to a comment in your write-up. That said that to the effect that additional overflow parking may be required. Um, but that seems to be minimized or rendered unnecessary if we stick with the one fifty. Or we change to the one fifty from the two fifty, um, which I am in favor of, uh. There, there have been a lot of negative comments, a lot of comments in opposition to this, to this, uh, proposal. Um, by numerous residents of the city. There have been, if, there have been comments in favor of it, but. And it is just a numbers game, but, uh, there have been a lot of comments against this plan. And they've fallen into, there are kind of certain comments that have repeated themselves. And, and one of those is compatibility. And I think we ought to talk about that, so. Now, the, the, e- everybody has read, it's apparent from the comments, has read about compatibility. Um, what the compatibility criteria is. And I guess, and staff has found that it is compatible. With, uh, and, and by the way, the standard isn't just with surrounding properties. It's other properties within the same zoning district, so RL, right? So is this, a- and we know that special use permits conceptually can be in RL, that's in the code. So, uh, how did you find, or can you talk some about your finding that, that you, this is compatible? Um, this use is compatible with other uses nearby, uh, excuse me, other properties within the same zoning district and surrounding properties.
You want to address that? There, there are, um, uh, there are a, a number of non-residential, non-agricultural uses in the, in the rural district throughout the city. We have, um, uh, another country inn in, in the rural district, the Serenby Inn is in the rural district. Um, an event center, the Sherry Hollow Farm in the rural district, um, an active school in the rural district, um. I'm sorry, that's not, that's actually in the village district. I was thinking of the school on River Down Road with that, that's technically in the village. There's no other, other development like that around it. It's, it's, um, the things around it are, again, single family residents on la- large lots. Um, but that is technically a village zone, I'm sorry. Um, there is an old school building that's not being used. Um, around twenty thousand square feet up on Cedar Grove Road that's in the rural district. Um, uh, but as I say, not being used right now, um, we also have, uh, uh. Uh, of course, city hall right here is, uh, is in, in the rural district with, uh, residences right nearby. Um, um, and, uh, we did, uh. We did rezone around the existing, um, shop. So those are little spot zones, Smith's store. The gas station up in, in, in Hamilton have little spot zones. Churches, of course, are, um, uh, in the rural district as well. It's a little different, only get mostly used one or a couple of days, a couple of days a week. Um, this particular property has, um, pretty significant buffering. Um, which changes in my mind, the calculation of, um. Of its compatibility with, with what's right next door. The experience of most people will just be that hundred and twenty feet of, of woods. Um, they won't have any experience of the buildings that are interior to that buffer. And so it really doesn't, um. Uh, have much effect to the, to the exterior. That is the whole philosophy behind the buffers around, um, villages and, uh, and Hamlets. Um, that it is supposed to maintain, maintain the rural character of the city, um, by hiding the activity behind, behind buffers. I think they've achieved that mostly here. Um, and then again, the overall density, um, as, uh, as the applicant has pointed out, is, uh, is similar. To, um, to what you would find in the residential area when you just look at, um, square feet per acre. Um, it's on, it's on that same, uh, really right in that same, on that same order.
Thank you, um, I, I understood, understood, uh, your rationale for that. Um, a- another criteria that has concerned people is traffic. We've had a question, how do we determine traffic? Well, we don't. You guys do, uh, a- and we either agree and follow or not, so. Uh, explain a little bit about your determination that traffic is not going to, is not going to really cause a, uh, insert a terrible.
Right, right. Uh, certainly the, the, the additional use does represent an increase in traffic. Um, uh, I can't try to claim that wouldn't be a noticeable increase. Um, but when you, um, are evaluating traffic, uh, standard methods would be to look at the base level of traffic. Which, um, as the applicant pointed out, is about twelve hundred trips a day on that road. Um, which is about a third of what you find on Hutchison Ferry, similar to what you find on Rico Road, according to G dot numbers. Um, and, um, evaluate the additional traffic that the use would add to the road. Um, uh, standard numbers are not available for, um, uh, event venues. They are available for lodging. Um, there's kind of a big range, um, I looked at the standard numbers. Um, uh, published numbers that an engineer would use and some people's commentary on them. Um, there are a lot of ways that when you're looking at parking numbers and traffic numbers that, um, um. Certainly among New Urbanists and, and some others, there's, um, there's, there, there's some lack of faith. Uh, in, in, in the standard numbers, uh, because everything depends on, um, specific situations. And places are designed to be as auto-oriented as possible and add as much parking as possible for the busiest day of the year. This is a, this is a general statement, it, 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 uh, of, of the, of the lack of faith in the numbers. Um, uh, I looked at a range. See. So for the special use permit, um, I'm sorry, for the, um, uh, for the, um, lodging use. Um, a fairly standard, um, fairly standard numbers are two point five to eight trips a day per room. Um, in, uh, one analysis that I was looking at, um, that the larger number is the ITE number, which is the, the engineer's number. Um, uh, they had done a study where they compared a lot of places. Most of them were in the range of forty to sixty percent of that number. Um, there were a couple that were even higher than that number by a little bit, but most of them were quite a bit lower. Um, than the, uh, than the eight per day. Um, local, um, conditions related to the, um, uh, the lodging itself. And its, um, locality, um, affect those numbers greatly, right? Something right in the middle of downtown, probably not going to create quite as many car trips per day. Something, um, here, um, more, more isolated, only, only accessible by car, might, um, generate more trips per day. However, a large part of the, uh, uh, experience here at, uh, in the proposed, uh, country inn. Is the dining experience. And, um, we wouldn't expect to see, uh, much traffic leaving the site for, for dining. Which is one of the m- major trip generators for, uh, for lodging. So that would tend to, to, to keep a lot of, um, a lot of traffic on site. So it's hard to pin down exactly what the number is. But when you take these numbers, also the recommendation of some of the traffic engineers, um, that I was looking at, if you're trying to get an average. Um, um, you, um, reduce it a little bit, right? It's not all, uh, hundred percent full all the time. Um, for the event venue, they recommended, um, uh, using a number about seventy-five percent capacity for the, um. Uh, for the, uh, and for an average day. Um, and assume somewhere in the neighborhood of two point two to two point five occupants per vehicle. Um, this is the event venue. There are no ITE numbers for this. This is kind of what they're, these engineers I was reading from. Um, their, um, their, their experience. I did a limited range of, of, um, uh, of research, but these seem to be, I found several things that agreed in, in, in general. So for a hundred and fifty foot, I'm sorry, a hundred and fifty, uh, person venue with the sixteen rooms. Something on the order of, um, two hundred or so trips a day is a reasonable average number. Peaks would be higher. Um, but when you throw that two hundred, maybe three hundred trips a day on top of twelve hundred. You end up with maybe fifteen hundred trips a day on Wilkerson Mill Road, um, when evaluating a, um, uh. A, a traffic study and considering whether, um, traffic improvements are needed or whether it's going to cause a problem, you look at what's called levels of service. Um, and levels of service go from A down to E and even below. It's complicated formula, uh, based on how free flowing the traffic is. Let A is completely free flowing. B is generally free throwing, free, free flowing, um, with, with the occasional, um, uh, slowdown. Uh, certainly twelve hundred is well in the A category. You don't get out of the A category until you're well up into the thousands. You don't start having to, um, uh, require people to make traffic improvements until they get down to, depending on local. Policies, um, D or E level.
That's like turnout.
And so, right, that, that, that's right. And so we are, um, uh. L O S C, L O S D, you're getting well over ten thousand cars a day on a two lane road. So, so we're nowhere close to those kinds of, of traffic problems.
We're in the top category on Wilkerson Mill.
That's it.
Okay. Um, and what is the criteria? When, when is a traffic study required under the code, under the UDC?
Uh, wh- when the threshold for a traffic study is at fifty percent of the, uh, the regional DRI, developments of regional impact threshold.
And this, of course, well, does not, well under, well under that.
That's it.
Um. The, there, there's another criteria that we've heard a lot about and that's adverse impact and what kind of ad- and noise and light and sound or. Uh, traffic and, uh, no, uh, uh, just occup- occupants there. Um, the standard that we use for evaluating a special use permit is a little different. Um, uh, than, than some of the other standards that we have, but the standard is this, um. Uh, uh, no application for a s- special administrative permit or a special use permit shall be granted. Unless satisfactory provisions and arrangements have been made concerning each of the following. Now, I, I will tell you with the twenty-four conditions with, uh, subparts to them, it seems to me that there are. Quite a few provisions and arrangements that are being made to try to mitigate a number of these issues, including the adverse impacts. Um, that's the way it looks to me. Um, and so, uh, I, I, I think as a general matter, uh, and thank you. Uh, for, for the explanation, there's been a lot of work and thought gone into trying to make this, uh, to, to lessen the impacts and try to make it. Make it work for, for them. And nonetheless, we have a lot of, a lot of, uh, uh, complaints in the area. That, that's kind of my general comments, um, my general questions. But you have one specific question, where's the dumpster?
Where's the dumpster? Uh, we had a condition in there about placement.
Right.
With a ten feet of kitchen.
In the.
That's a health.
Yeah. In, in the most recent version, dumpsters actually are addressed in two different conditions and they conflict a little bit. I think there, it takes some ironing out. One of them says it needs to be within ten feet of the kitchen, I think it says ten feet. And another one talks about, um, uh, a location preferably with pull-throughs where, uh, trucks not going to have to back up very much. When you look at site plan, dumpster location is not identified on there. Um, do, we did look at that with an, an eye toward it, imagining it in a spot where they have a couple utility buildings. I don't know if that's what the plan is. I think that, um, uh, actually, uh, hopefully the applicant can answer that question, but if, i- i- if not, okay.
So, the actual natural trash that comes from the country and dining hall vision. We plan one have a, a, uh, direct dump in, uh, the Georgia, uh, Department of Health. And then, um, for any extra trash, it will be located probably off in this area right here. Um, both apart, so we would travel in the natural trash bins, they're black, they have wheels. Transport that from the dining hall over here, so that to your point, uh, a truck can come in, unload it though.
Thank you. Um, and our provisions for tr- garbage pickup, there now is a condition in there, eight to five, Monday through Friday.
That's correct.
One, at least one a week.
That's great, that's correct. And I would recommend based on what we just heard that we remove that ten foot requirement, right? Assuming you all are comfortable with that.
And I would be doing things through GFO that exists.
The health department's going to require where that dumpster goes with how it's built and all that.
So do we want to strike the whole thing or just the ten foot portion? Because it, it has to be.
Do we know what the source of that is, the ten foot?
I think it was just, it was just enough trying.
I think it was staff trying to come up with something that was reasonable, that wasn't too, like, opposite side of the property, but also not like right next to.
You're not wheeling stinky tractor.
Yes, exactly.
Well, can you just add, I mean, you're going to get a, a, a more refined plot at some point, when you just address it at that time, let's say.
That's right, that's right. Just as long as it's consistent, anything we have in the conditions, that'll be part of our evaluation of that more detailed plan. So we need to make sure our conditions aren't so tight that they can't do it.
Ten foot sounds too tight then.
Just to clarify, so there's other parts to this, like the, how it needs to be on a pad located to, and constructed to minimize spillage. Um, and that they're supposed to be fully enclosed by a wall or opaque fence. Do we want to keep that in and just remove the ten foot portion or just remove the whole condition?
I would say just the ten foot portion.
Just the ten foot. Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
I think the rest of it's consistent with Department of Health.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, one of the, one of the conditions, um, or one of the comments that came up was about septic. And the place where you had your, uh, testing done was not where the septic field's going to be located. However, that's going to be governed by the health department, right?
Correct.
And they're going to have to get satisfied, the health department about percolation and everything else.
That's it.
To locate the septic system, okay.
Um, it's only one kitchen, there's not two kitchens.
One kitchen. Uh, the dining hall has, uh, a warming kitchen, it's not where you cook out of for healthcare reasons.
There was a comment made, a question about whether there were cooking classes. I, I guess I understood from the beginning that there may be cooking classes.
Of course, I, um, post current cooking classes right now.
Yeah, um, a- and I, I'm not sure the concern about that except, um. Uh, can you talk a little bit about the cooking classes, please?
Yes, sir.
Uh, currently right now, I serve as an adjunct professor at my alumni, Auburn University. I do culinary cooking classes, uh, where I travel back down to Auburn. It's open for the public. Typically it holds around thirty people for the class, also teach culinary students. I plan on having that same experience, um, brought back to the state where people can learn, um, and do that garden, garden to table. Um, kind of feel and provide a beautiful three course dinner that people cook for themselves. So this is something that the community can also, um, purchase tickets to. It's not a general, uh, come off for y'all. Um, everything will still be within that private, uh, dining experience. And this will be taking place at the, uh, commissary kitchen.
Thank you. I- is it true that, uh, you're not going to build a house there anymore?
That's not true. We will have family residents on the property.
Um, where, where will that be located?
So originally. Originally I planned for it to be where the new driveway is. So since the driveway has moved, um, I don't have, uh. Quite any intent to put it right there off the driveway. Quite any intent to put it right there off the driveway, uh, the best location is where the. I guess majority of the tree is coming off of the quote-unquote emergency exit, excuse me. Um, but we do have house plans that have already been drawn up and labeled for eighty-seven thirty-five Wilkerson Mill Road. Those plans just have not been on the site, just due to the fact that I'm trying to see this through.
Thank you.
Sir.
And is there any problem with that being added later on with a small country inn?
The home, no.
I actually had a question about the, um, the villas, are they two-bedroom?
Two-bedroom, yes, ma'am.
And are there any occupancy laws in Chat Hills for two-bedroom accommodations?
Um, such as, what do you?
Like you don't put twelve people in a two-bedroom accommodations? We think there was a statewide.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were asking about a limit on, on a two, at a two-bedroom unit. Um, uh, there are. So what I'm most familiar with is, uh, residential, I mean, there's a certain number of square feet per, per occupant required for, um, residential uses. Um, we don't have local code, uh, for that, uh, there's probably something in, um, uh, State Department of Public Health, but I don't know the numbers.
Be a building, uh, problem. Um, to that, to that point, there's sixteen cabins, correct?
Yes, sir.
And it was stated that there were doubles, you speak to the program of that, is that? Two rooms in each cabin with bathrooms and what have you, is that what it is?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
I can explain it maybe, but.
That's, that's fine.
Yes, sir, and we can control for the safety of the.
So it's, so it's rented is thirty-two units, potentially, not sixteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, and it will still, currently, in the, in currently what we're doing in the reform of, is it more than likely will be, um, governed by a flagship, so we will honor codes and.
Wouldn't need to govern that flagship.
Like, um, they go a lot of code where it's a free draw. If we just run, I mean, circle of, uh, because there's a filter on.
You'll be under a flag, is what you're saying?
Okay.
You will have standards, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's currently what's in the reform of what it's going to be, so we have no intention of it being ran by Justin and friends.
It will have a reservation system.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Online, okay. All right, it's not like certain.
Any more discussion?
No.
Okay, um, I think we can entertain a motion at this point, it's, um. I, I think you had, uh, a suggestion on a condition.
There were two.
Okay.
I think Mike has them, that they might need to be wordsmithed a little bit, especially on the audible component.
Um.
The one fifty was, I think we did.
Okay, so, right, right, condition three changed to, um, one hundred and fifty guests, the, um, what condition number is the?
The dumpster, I just added, um. Uh, fifteen.
Fifteen, okay, um, just for the record, I have a couple of little, um, proofreading changes.
There are a couple of types.
Yeah, 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 um, okay, so yeah, the dumpster, uh, the dumpster change, um, let's see. Talk about, um, yeah, the wall or vegetative buffer, um, or dense hedge around the outdoor garden dining area. Do we want to limit the number of tables or seats in that area by, by condition?
We have a number of people limited.
So the number of, number of seats or number of people, occupants of the garden. Yeah.
I'm, I'm not inclined to do that, I, I'm more inclined to specify that the height of the wall.
Okay.
Maybe a minimum of six to eight feet.
If it's a wall and a hedge, you would also want to see it tall, right? Yeah, I, okay, good. Um, so that will be an additional, we'll add a condition, a whole number for that.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the applicant's, um, proposal with the conditions that were read tonight, with the additional two conditions that were stipulated this evening.
Sir, a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, aye, the motion carries. Um. And that will be the end, the conclusion of the public hearing. Um. Uh, there's no old business. There is new business about a planning commission meeting change date. And that is to change the meeting in May, from May twenty-third to May sixteenth. Um, do I have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
A second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, that carries, staff reports, please.
Uh, only, um, building permit numbers, I just have the three, so I won't be looking at it when I talk to you, but you'll see that, uh, uh, eighteen total permits versus seven a year ago, so quite a bit more than February in twenty twenty-three. And that month a year ago, there were no, um, new homes among the permits, we had seven, um, February of this year, so, um. Uh, reflects a couple of things and changes in the economy, of course, we also have a couple of, um. Uh, a couple of areas building right now, State of Cedar Grove, um, is building houses and Serenby Overlook and Lupo, uh, Lupo Loop in, in Motto. Um, are, um, are also building, so, um, that has, um, some effect on, uh. On that, the availability of the, uh, additional lots, additional marketing going on by, by a couple of organizations, that's all I have.
Right, um, I believe there's no other business before us, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? All right, the meeting is adjourned.